As I'm sure you're mostly aware, the Wilmington community sadly lost a young community member, James Rooney, this past week, and we're going to take a moment of silence in recognition of him. Thank you. Okay, the first item on our agenda this evening, and we've got a big agenda, and I'm so pleased to see such a great audience, thank you for joining us, and on a pretty night. The first item is our consent agenda. We're going to take the first one, which is approval of a donation from the Wilmington Educational Foundation for Technology Grants.
Yes, and Robert is here. He doesn't want me to acknowledge him, but Robert is here from the Wilmington Education Foundation, not in that role per se, but we obviously are very grateful to the Wilmington Education Foundation. We have technology grants this year awarded in the total amount of $5,086.6. We have six different grant recipients, so you have a memo in your packet for the various grants that were made, and obviously we thank them, and some really great stuff here that really should help support teachers in their efforts to teach kids and instill in them some 21st century skills. So, we're very grateful for that donation.
Great. Thank you to WEF, that is a wonderful donation, and we have some very grateful recipients, and congratulations to them. The next item is the approval of a donation to the Wilmington Public Schools Athletic Department.
And this donation was made by the Covino family in memory of their son Ryan, who was a student athlete, graduated from Wilmington High School in 1999, and their son just recently passed away, and we are appreciative of that donation of $675 to the athletic department, and certainly share with the family their condolences, and are appreciative of this donation in memory of their son.
Great, thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, and I realized I did not ask for a motion for approval of WEF. Was anybody paying attention?
No, we weren't going to do it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, okay, we've got a lot on the plate here. The third one we'll take is the out-of-state field trip, Bear Island to Meredith, New Hampshire.
This is our annual band camp, otherwise known as this trip to Bear Island, that Mrs. Mehdi leads each year in August, just before we come back to school, and she does a wonderful job with the kids, bringing back lots of alumni to support the band in their effort to start the year off. So, that field trip again is August 21st through the 20th, they're returning on the 25th.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip to Meredith, New Hampshire. Mrs. Bonnich? Mr. Talbot, second, all those in favor? Thank you, okay. Let's see, I think I can put a couple of these together. We've got the approval of minutes from our May 25th regular session, and warrants G424. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 25th and the warrant G424? Mrs. Kane? Mr. Bjork, second, all those in favor? Great, okay, I think we're on F. For warrants for payroll, we've got weekend ending April 27th, May 11th, and May 25th. Can I get a motion to approve that warrant? Mrs. Burns, thank you, a second. Mrs. Bonnich, thank you, all those in favor of approving the payroll warrants? Thank you, one abstain, Mrs. Kane. The next item, our warrants, sped 25 and sped 26. Can I get a motion to approve sped 25 and 26? Mr. Mullis, Mrs. Kane, all those in favor of approving sped 25 and 26? I think we've got all two abstain, Mrs. Burns and Mr. Bjork. And the last warrant item is CB15. Can I get a motion to approve CB15? Mr. Talbot, Mrs. Bonnich, thank you, all those in favor? Thank you, we've got two abstentions, Mrs. Burns and Mr. Bjork. Phew, we did it, that always seems like a marathon on those. All right, the next item we have is our student representative report. Ms. Dina?
May I just say hello to everyone's full house today? Love it. So much has happened in the past week. The senior banquet was held on May 31st, then Science MCAS was held on June 1st and 2nd for the freshmen, then happily and somewhat sadly, the seniors graduated on June 5th. They bitted you to Wilmington High School, but we all know that they will make appearances here and now and then. And then, from June 3rd and 5th through 5th, there was a leadership conference named Mass Star, held in Newton at LaSalle College, where one high school sophomore was nominated to represent the school. May I say, I was the privileged nominee. And I was nominated by my guidance counselor, Mrs. Kehlaine. This conference taught me the importance of leadership, responsibility, intentionality, taking the initiative, and being collaborative in your community. And it doesn't end there. They encourage you to give back to your community by certain community service events, starting your own nonprofit. Being only 16, they encourage you not to look upon your age, but look upon how much you can offer to your society and your community and beyond that. And they also provide grants to make you achieve your goal for that as well. And I am very fortunate in that Wilmington High School is one of the schools that participates in this leadership conference every single year. Moving on, to finish up, tomorrow is the day, the privilege day of class selections for every single class, and it is also, as you noticed on the board outside, it is Make a Statement Day as well, where students and staff are encouraged to wear a tee-shirt that displays their favorite saying, quote, anything inspirational. Mrs. Estrada has instructed her students to make a shirt with anything they love, like carpe diem, whatever fuels their brains, as extra credit to like kind of bribe them into doing it. And to end my report is obviously my quote, and it is "Be the change you want to see in the world" by Mahatma Gandhi.
Excellent, thank you very much. That's great, and we have a little special recognition of our own this evening. I can do this gracefully without... We would like to present you with a certificate of our appreciation for your service and dedication as a student representative to the Wilmington School Committee for the 2015-2016 school year. Thank you.
Aww.
And we have to say, keep doing the work. And it comes with...
Oh, my gosh.
Something for your studies.
Wow.
A little gift card to Barnes &amp; Noble.
That is amazing.
So, thank you very much for all you do.
This hug, this hug right here is a hug for every student. I won't take up the time.
I'll make sure to pick it up later.
Yeah, I won't take up the time in giving each one of you a hug, because that would really, really, you know, extend this meeting, but let me just assure you, if I get the chance after this meeting, or I see you later on in the year, I will give you a personal hug. Thank you so much.
That's great, thank you. We appreciate all you do for us, and it's nice to hear from students, our favorite part. And a little more recognition, the evening continues, feel the love, everyone. Oh, no, hold on, hold on. Superintendent's report, please.
Yes, I wanted to, I really only have one thing that I would like to address this evening, and it really revolves around the, what you recognized earlier, which was the loss to our community, tragic and unexpected loss of a 12-year-old boy, James Rooney. And I'd like to read for you something that I shared with the staff actually today, in recognition of what has happened. These past two weeks have been difficult for the Wilmington Public Schools community, most notably Wilmington Middle School. The tragic and unexpected loss of a 12-year-old boy was a defining moment in all of our professional careers. Whether you had James as a student, saw him in the hallways, or had one of his siblings, Steven, Dennis, or Cullen, in your class, you were impacted by his passing. Even those who did not know him or his family members personally are still grieving over the loss of one of our kiddos. I do not have children of my own, although when people ask me, I do tell them that I am entrusted with the lives of 3,442 kids. We all take this responsibility very seriously, so losing a student is heart-wrenching and personal. I didn't know James personally, but I do recall seeing him in the halls of Wilmington Middle School. I certainly feel like I know him more, having spoken to students, staff, and family members over these past two weeks. He clearly was an engaging young man with a great sense of humor, an infectious laugh, and a love for learning. As we work to heal from this loss, we need to celebrate this little guy and focus on the fond memories to comfort us during this difficult time. I want to acknowledge how incredibly impressed I am with the way that all of our staff pulled together and supported one another through this difficult time. Nearly every principal and district administrator responded to my request late Friday evening to convene by phone as a crisis team on Saturday morning at 8:00 a.m. over the holiday weekend. Together, we worked to figure out how best to support the Rooney family, the Wilmington Middle School family, and the Wilmington Public Schools community as we confronted this tragedy. Many of these folks were present on Monday as we offered grief counseling to students and staff, and returned on Tuesday to be an extra set of hands to support the needs of the Wilmington Middle School administration and staff. I must also acknowledge and express our sincere gratitude to the Wilmington Police Department for their support, most notably Lieutenant Scott Sensabaugh, who provided invaluable counsel and facilitated our accessing of NEMLEC counseling resources. The NEMLEC counselors that responded to our crisis were outstanding and integrated seamlessly into our own behavioral health team. Their presence allowed our staff to take care of our students and staff, but also to take care of themselves. We owe them all a huge debt of gratitude. Then, there is our counseling staff. As many of you know, I've had the opportunity to work with many of them as part of our Behavioral Health Task Force. I always knew that we had one of the strongest counseling and behavioral health teams anywhere. Guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, school psychologists, and social workers from across the district came together over those first few days to support our students and staff. You were awesome. To the teachers that without hesitation offered to come to Wilmington Middle School on Friday, June 3rd, to cover for teachers who wanted to attend the funeral service, we thank you. We had barely processed the chosen date and time for the services when we were inundated with offers of support and coverage. The Wilmington Middle School teachers were so relieved to know that their students would be in the hands of educators from across our school community. I know that the motto for your association is working together always, and that has certainly been evident during this challenging time. To the staff of Wilmington Middle School, North Intermediate, Wuburn Street, and Wildwood, I am sincerely sorry for your loss and the grief that you are experiencing, particularly those that had James as a student. If James were able to reach out to you, I do believe he would be thanking you for all that you did for him during the time he was in your care. Finally, there are three individuals that went above and beyond and exhibited a true commitment to our school community, Kelly LaRoche, Deb Horning, and Ama Gerard. When I arrived at the funeral home at 6:00 p.m. with the line wrapped around the house and down the street, I knew that you had been there since 3:15 in the afternoon to support James's closest relatives and friends in their private pre-wake visitation. I watched you for over three hours as you coached each and every student and helped them deal with what they were about to experience. Once they came through the line, I watched as you gave them hugs, dried their tears, and counseled them through their grief. You knew each and every student, you knew exactly who would struggle the most and how. I honestly don't know how you did what you did. In my book, you are the strongest and most compassionate individuals I have ever had the privilege to work with. You exemplify what it means to truly care for our students. To the entire Wilmington School community, you should be proud of the community that you have built. This was a tragic loss. For me, it validates that we must continue our efforts to support students' social, emotional, and behavioral health. Many of you shared that you want to redouble our efforts and work as quickly as possible to build the coping skills and resiliency that these students truly need. I know many of us are thinking, what more could I have done? Please know that you do so much each and every day to support our children. I choose to believe that James would want us all to know that the personal connections we make to each individual student matter. I don't think he would want us to be sad. I think he would tell us to keep doing the great work we are doing, and to continue to place the needs of each individual student above all else. James, thank you for helping us to remember the true meaning of community. We learned so much from you. Rest in peace, little guy. Thank you.
We have an opportunity here to honor some valued staff members. We have 12 folks retiring this year from Wilmington Public Schools. We have a handful that are able to join us this evening, but we would like to say thank you so much for the dedicated service that you have given the students and parents of Wilmington, and we have some recognition for you. Please, yes, okay, great, thank you. Mrs. Harrison provided our youngest children at the Boutwell as a kindergarten teacher for nine years of service. Thank you very much. We have Meg Harrison, forged ahead as our athletic director with 30 years of service. Georgia Payne, 22 years. Oh, great. Indiana Scher with 22 years of service. Very much. And we have David Canet, middle school technology teacher, 18 years of service. Well, I was going to say, Mr. Canet was my daughter's teacher. Special care there. And we also have Jane Masser, some of the other names. Jane has served our community as the administrative assistant at Boutwell for 20 years of service. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We hope you'll miss you. Okay, and I would like to recognize those folks that were unfortunately able to join us this evening, but I would like to share and certainly applaud them as well. We have Linda Cornell, who gave us three years of service as the Wuburn Street reading specialist. Thank you, Mrs. Cornell. We have Paul Gately, who was a high school special education teacher, four years of service. Thank you, Mr. Gately. We have Brenda Markhu, high school science teacher, 11 years of service. Jerry Peterson, the Shawshine Admin Assistant, 30 years of service. So, thank you very much, Mrs. Peterson. Ann Tanner, the Shawshine Educational Assistant, 27 years. Maureen Travis, the West Intermediate Nurse, 21 years of service. And finally, Lynn Vick, Shawshine Elementary Art Teacher, 19 years of service. Thank you very much, we really appreciate all that you've done for our community. Okay, and Mr. Harrison, I have to call you back up to do your spring sports athletic wrap-up. Good evening.
It seems strange that this will be my last appearance at a school committee, but they say so be it. I believe it's time to probably move on. So, I'd like to start off with my spring synopsis, starting with baseball. Our coach is Aldo Kyra. We finished second in the Middle Sex League this year. We had Jackson Gillis and Brian Kavanaugh as our Middle Sex League All-Stars. Softball, coached by Audrey Cabral-Pini, finished second also in the Middle Sex League. And All-Stars were Shannon Horgan, Jennifer DeVideo, Ellie Morgan, Marianne, rather, and Dana Goulet. Girls track, coached by Bree Carroll, had Middle Sex League All-Stars Danielle Baldi, Alicia Luna, Julia Gake, Emma Garrity, Jamie Shanning, Taylor Peroni, Caleb Avon, Heather Nemec, and Kate Thompson. Boys track, coached by Mike Kenny, had Middle Sex League All-Stars Devon Langefeld, Evan Spirlina, Joe Gudrow, Brad Aldridge, Steve Godfrey, Kyle Nelson, and Chris Petron. Also, Joe Gudrow, this weekend is headed to the New England's, which is in Britton, Connecticut. He'll be doing the 200-meter dash. Boys tennis, was coached by Robert Mealy, and he had Middle Sex League All-Stars Evan Myers, Teddy Mealy, and Zach Myersonkowski. Girls tennis, coached by Matt Hackett, had Middle Sex League All-Stars Christina Woods and Louise Schramm. This year, many of you probably know that, you know, Jackson Gillis, baseball player, has had many, you know, scouts at the game. Every time he pitched, he's had as many as four or five, you know, MLB scouts watching him. Now, the baseball draft is tomorrow and Friday. Jackson Gillis himself is not sure if he wants to stay in the draft, he's thinking about dropping out of the draft and concentrating and becoming a better pitcher at Vanderbilt, his school that he's going to go to. But as he tweeted out, he said that if somebody wants to offer money equal to a second-round pick, then all ears. All right, so we'll see what happens with Jackson tomorrow and Friday. The other thing I wanted to mention was our athletic banquet was held last Wednesday. This is where we give out our major awards. Our major award winners this year, the Ding Driscoll Award, which goes to a senior with the most dedication, you know, to sports. We had our female award, went to a two-sport athlete, played basketball, Middle Sex League All-Star, and Low Son All-Star, and captain of soccer, was Kelly Souza, who's going to Bridgewater State. The male award this year went to a three-sport captain, and a three-season Middle Sex League All-Star, in football, winter track, spring track, was Kyle Nelson, and he'll be going to Pittsburgh State in the fall. The Lawrence Christian Award is given to a senior demonstrating sportsmanship, scholarship, and athletic ability. The female recipient this year is a three-sport athlete who played soccer and was captain of the winter and spring track, and was a Middle Sex League All-Star in both, oh, I'm sorry, in winter track. She'll be attending Roger Williams University this year, and it was Samantha Pitsy. The male recipient is a three-sport athlete also, captain of soccer, basketball, and baseball. He was a Middle Sex League All-Star and Low Son All-Star in soccer, be attending University of New Hampshire, and that was Matt Spur. And our Dr. Gerald Fagan Award, which is given to the most outstanding Wilmington High School athlete. Our female award goes to a three-sport athlete who played volleyball and captained both the winter and spring track teams. She was a Middle Sex League All-Star in both winter and spring track. She'd be attending Tufts University in the fall, and that was Julia Gake. And the male award also goes to a three-sport athlete, was captain of soccer, hockey, and baseball, was a Middle Sex League All-Star in all three sports, along with being voted Low Son All-Star in hockey. Be attending Bryant University in the fall, and that was Brian Kavanaugh. We also recognized Anna Remanzo for earning 13 varsity letters in her high school career. She was able to do this because she was an eighth-grade cross-country runner, when we had a waiver back then. So, she earned five letters in cross-country, four in winter track, and four in spring track. So, it was a great job by Anna Remanzo. And the last thing I was here, just wanted to mention about our summer camps, will be starting very soon, to begin on Monday, June 20th. As of today, we have 286 registrations, so registrations are going, going well. We have 11 different camps over a six-week period, and I'm just trying to tell people to come down and visit us and try us out.
That's great.
So, that's all I have for you today.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Thank you very much, we appreciate the update and the overview.
Thank you.
Thanks again for your service.
Bye-bye now.
Great, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all coming. Next up, we're going to hear a presentation of our district literacy plan, and that's going to be presented to us by our K-5 literacy coach, Holly Vanaswitz. Did I mispronounce your name? Close enough?
And Holly's actually joined this evening by Mrs. Christine McMiniman and Michelle DeVette, who are also members of the Literacy Plan Committee.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for having us tonight. We're excited to be here. We, the District Literacy Planning Committee, has been working for three years now, sort of developing this document that you all received in your packet. But, you know, it's been a three-year plan to get here and really sort of establish the vision for literacy in our district in a multi-year plan. The PowerPoint is just going to go over some of the highlights and some of the planning process, but I did want to just say that it's important to note that this is an ever-evolving document. You know, currently, it's written through 2019, but as our needs change and we grow with our literacy instruction throughout the district, this document is going to change and grow with us. And we'll be constantly evaluating this document every single year and making necessary tweaks as we go through. So, hit the down button, okay. So, the District Literacy Planning Committee is made up of several members spanning the district from elementary to secondary. The planning committee began with just elementary teachers because we know that the foundation of literacy is built in the elementary grades, and we felt it was important to really establish what that vision looked like at elementary before we brought in the secondary folks. This year, we brought in the secondary folks, and we really thought about what would make sense for secondary. And so, you can see, everyone listed here. And by the end of this year, we were able to put together a completed document, although we're still working on the exact vision for secondary, you know, it takes, it's a process. It was a process for elementary to get there, and it's going to be a process for secondary too, but there's some great things outlined in here that we'll be investigating at the secondary level. So, the purpose of the District Literacy Plan is really to articulate our improvement goals, and we want to connect the literacy work at all grade levels throughout the district. And we also want to provide consistency throughout the district, school to school, grade to grade. Also, we want to provide some structure and context for teaching and learning, and we want to provide a compass for short and long-term district planning. This document is really going to help school principals, for example, plan their goals for the upcoming years, knowing what the goals are outlined here in the District Literacy So, a couple of years ago, I was here and talked about some of this data, but in Wilmington, our MCAS data for ELA has been largely unchanged over the last several years. I know this particular slide dates back to 2012, but even earlier than that, our literacy scores have neither gone up nor gone down, they're just maintaining. And this data really supported our thinking around the need to strengthen literacy instruction. How can we support all of our groups of students to make appropriate gains in literacy? And... And in some of our work, in thinking about strengthening our literacy needs, Mary actually came across some data from a district that's pretty parallel to us. This is the town of Franklin, and they noticed some very similar trends in their data. They were not seeing huge gains in their ELA scores with MCAS. And Franklin decided to prioritize the implementation of high-quality literacy instruction, with particular attention to balanced literacy and the workshop model at the elementary grades. Franklin partnered with the consulting firm Teaching Learning Alliance, TLA, to support the district in making these critical shifts, and quite honestly, the results are astounding. In over a three-year span, the student scoring in advanced and proficient jumped from 84% to 98%, and the student scoring in the needs improvement and warning categories decreased from 16% to 1%. And you can see here, we have the graph for all students, and you can see in 2015 what a difference from the previous years. And then if you look at the students with disabilities category, an enormous change. It's pretty overwhelming data to support when you focus high-quality literacy instruction. When you focus on that, that you're going to see results over a period of time. So in our District Literacy Plan, we knew that we needed to address these deficiencies that we're seeing, just like Franklin did. And so that's how the creation of the District Literacy Plan began, to really set the course for the work that we need to take. And you may remember from earlier that we too have decided to partner with Teaching Learning Alliance, or TLA, just like Franklin has done for now at the elementary grades. And we'll talk about that in a minute. So we wanted to make sure that our plan addressed a tiered-balanced literacy instruction, standard means of assessment, and a systematic form of early intervention for children who experience difficulty with literacy. We know how critical early intervention is for our students. The younger we can get them, the more successful they'll be. And the research shows that if we leave these difficulties unaddressed, that these students, by the time they hit third grade, generally leads to a lack of success throughout the rest of their education and potentially affecting their lives outside of school. So it's absolutely critical that we address the needs of our students with literacy.
You're up.
So we'll move on to how the literacy plan has some key focus areas. And the first one really has to do with the systematic use of data. And we do have data at the elementary school using AmesWeb. We, at the elementary school and the intermediate schools, use the Benchmark Assessment System through Fountas and Pennell, so consistently collecting data to see where students are. And of course, we have our statewide testing results to use as well. And we also have our standards-based curriculum completely aligned to the Massachusetts frameworks. Maps are continuing to develop, and unit and lesson plans are going to continue to develop from that as we move toward the workshop model. We will continue to improve upon some of our interventions to support those students who are not meeting grade-level expectations with a tiered system of instruction. Everybody will get universal instruction at Tier 1. Some students may get Tier 2 instruction, and those students who are still perhaps struggling will receive Tier 3 instruction. So we are a work in progress, moving toward that multi-tiered system. And we'll continue our family and community involvement here as part of the plan, continue literacy nights for families. We actually have one planned at the north early on in the fall to get kids and families excited about reading at home, and that that has to continue. And it also describes the key elements that the district will have to continue to meet around supporting this plan. And they will have to, I don't want to say this too close to Mr. Ruggiero, sort of put their money where their mouth is. And you have to make sure the PD is in place to support the teachers. You need to make sure they have the resources, such as the books and the structure for the classrooms. So can we all work together as a team with this plan guiding us to make sure that those resources get allocated to the right places? And as you go through the plan, and I know it's overwhelming, we've spent many, many months, and as Holly said, close to three years, starting out and getting to a place where you have all of these components. You have a summary. You have the connections which are key for our literacy plan to the district improvement plan and the strategic objectives that we have as a school district. Why, and the purpose that we have for the plan, and consistency it goes back to, there perhaps was a time in the past 10 to 15 years that maybe we weren't all on the same page, and now we're hoping for consistency across elementary and intermediate, and then middle and secondary, so that everybody's speaking the same language when we're talking to children about reading and literacy. There are action map, plan maps involved there, and then how we're going to assess our progress as well. So I think that it's a large document, but broken down into these components, it's manageable, and certainly we're available for questions on certain components. So just as we set out to design the program, Holly mentioned that this really began several years ago, and we had a committee come together that spanned K to 5. And then we really took a look at what we were missing and what we needed to offer a balanced literacy program in the district. We took quite amount of time to develop the plan, and we really, this year, for the first time, expanded the committee to welcome middle school and secondary teachers on board. Because if we are moving toward a workshop model in the K to 5 grades, we have to make sure that the middle school and the high school teachers know what students are getting under their belt in K to 5. So we really needed to make the connections with them. Stage 5, as you can see, as we go next year, is really continue to refine. Holly mentioned the plan is going to evolve. As we grow in our own knowledge of the workshop model, we may fine-tune and really make this a stronger document and finalize and continue the implementation of the plan. And then the process will be keeping tabs on it. Where are we? Monitoring our progress and really adjusting it as we go.
So the intended outcomes for this, basically, what are we looking to get out of it? We wanted a document that clearly outlined the vision that the district has for literacy instruction, K through 12, and that really articulates the elements of the district's literacy program that we have. We wanted to develop elements of a standards-based literacy curriculum and to set clear priorities for each year in a multi-year plan, which aligns to the strategic plan that we have for the district. We wanted to identify criteria for establishing the tiers and the interventions for those tiers, just as Christine talked about, and for the reading specialists and special ed teachers to work together with everybody that supports general ed classroom teachers, reading support services, special ed services, that everyone is working together and collaborating through this. As well as developing a plan for sustained, high-quality professional development to support the literacy programming for educators. Again, that's going to be reassessed as we go through the program, what needs we still have and how we can do that. That's important for the educators and for the teachers that are really living this on a daily basis. Ultimately, the goal, to increase performance of all students, just as Holly talked about, as well as closing the achievement gap between our high-needs and our non-high-needs group, exactly what the data showed earlier. So some of the highlights of the District Literacy Plan, K through 5, as we talked about already, we're going to be working with TLA for high-quality job-embedded PD for teachers. It's a multi-year partnership focused on balanced literacy and the workshop model. Cohort 1, which is grades 1, 3, and 4, will work directly with TLA next year, receiving the job-embedded coaching. And teachers in Cohort 2, which is grades kindergarten, 2nd, and 5th, will work directly with them for job-embedded coaching in the 2017-2018 school year. This summer, TLA is offering summer workshops for all elementary teachers. They're offering, I think, one in June, two in August, that are open to everybody in both cohorts. And then this year, in the 2015-2016 school year, foundations was implemented in grade 1. Teachers found it very successful. They've seen an increase in students' word knowledge. So next year, it's being implemented in kindergarten and 2nd grade, and each grade level will receive four coaching days to assist with that program. In addition, the District Literacy Planning Committee will continue to work and investigate the benefits of the workshop model, determine whether or not it supports the middle school literacy goals for grades 6 through 8. Will continue to work towards finding a universal screen for grade 6 students to help better identify at-risk students. Grades K through 12 will evaluate and determine effective and consistent Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions. K through 12 will continue to develop and implement writing rubrics that are aligned with the frameworks for Massachusetts. Will also continue to work with developing curriculum maps for grades K through 12 as well. And then, again, PD supporting this, provided to all teachers and educators for balanced literacy, workshop model, keys to literacy, best practices for literacy instruction.
So finally, we really want to thank you. You know, a lot of this work has been supported by not only the school committee, but the town as well. You have supported the budget to bring in TLA, to purchase foundations for 1st grade and now 2nd and kindergarten, to purchase the Cockens units of study for reading that teachers will use as they embark on, using the workshop model. And we just cannot thank you enough for supporting the needs that we have with literacy and really working with us to establish this multi-year plan that we will be working through over the next several years. So thank you so much. And any questions?
I will just offer a thank you right back. This is a 70-page document. A lot of work went into this, so we appreciate the efforts of the committee. I'll look to my left. Sometimes it's a little hard to see. I'll look to my left first for any questions or comments of Mr. Talbot.
What's the percentage goal that you're looking for? Is it on a yearly basis, or what's the number that you're looking to achieve?
Percentage goal on...
In the slide, there it said the increased performance of all students. So what kind of percentages are you looking for each year to increase, like, say, 15% or something like that, or, I mean, that's a bit high, but...
Yeah, I don't know if we've sort of set that target. What we do know is, at least in elementary, when we are partnering with this consulting firm, we do know that it might take time before we're seeing the results in MCAS, say. So I don't know if we've established that, but perhaps that's something we should investigate.
I think also individual schools tend to set those, depending on where their needs are, their strengths and weaknesses. So in the past, for example, maybe we've wanted to raise the achievement level for students by 5%, moving 5% more of our students into the advanced and proficient categories. So each school certainly has an individual makeup of their strengths and weaknesses. So this is the overarching plan, and then the schools, it will drive the schools to work towards a particular percentage based on the students that they have sitting in front of them.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments down the send? No, we're good. Okay, how about down the send? Questions, comments?
Just want to say thank you for taking the time putting this together and coming here and presenting it to us.
Thank you. It's been a labor of love, for sure.
It's been labor.
Mrs. Kate?
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. I'm going to, I don't want to go over everything. Thanks to you guys. I had three hours today doing this. It was the second time I went through it, because of course, this is my low literacy. BAS, what is that?
That is the Benchmark Assessment System.
Thank you.
Or more formally, the Fountas and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System, but it's the BAS for short.
So two to three times a year, teachers and reading specialists are testing students to see how much they are progressing in their reading levels, at their instructional level, at their grade-level reading level.
Which brings me right to, that was one of my questions on assessment that I had later on there. It looked like there's a lot of assessing going on, and so I was curious as to, when you're doing those assessments, what exactly, they must be individual for the different grades, but are they general assessment? Are they specific to what the students had read or worked on during that little section of time?
Well, so the BAS is a benchmark assessment, so it's not material the students have been using in class. It's a benchmark, and you, this child, it's actually a fantastic benchmark, but the children read a story, and the teacher is listening and coding everything that the child says and does while they're reading. There's also, after, at the end of 1st grade, it starts, but there's a silent reading portion as well. You're looking at their overall fluency. You're looking at their overall accuracy, their reading accuracy, and you're looking at their comprehension on three different levels, so that you're really getting a full picture of where this child is with their reading skills. So what are they mastering and what do they still need support in? And then what that allows the teacher to do is to see, where do I need to instruct this student? How can I group them with other students that are appropriate match? And then, using the materials that I have in my room, how can I support their growth further? Does that answer your question?
It does, but it brings me to my next area. Thank you. You're right where I'm thinking. For one thing, I'm thinking, if you've got 20 students in your classroom, how is that going to be accomplished?
Well, so the teachers have been doing it in 1 through 3, 4, oh my goodness, this must be the 3rd, 4th, or 5th year that they've been doing it. In the intermediate grades, it's the second full year. And I think that, yes, it is time-consuming, and yes, it's a one-on-one assessment, as is AmesWeb too, that we, which we also have. But once we're more established with the workshop model, it really lends itself to taking a child one-on-one. Part of the workshop model is working with kids, not only just one-on-one, but in small group and whole group. So it'll be a lot easier to pull children and do these assessments than now with Houghton Mifflin, that doesn't, that particular model does, it's trickier to find time to pull students to do this necessary assessing.
The next thing is the 120 minutes, and then, we have 90 minutes of math right now.
Yep.
120 minutes, how are we working that through?
So we decided in the literacy plan that we were going to set the target at the recommended amount of time for literacy. Now, we're not going to be there next year, should be 120 minutes. We won't. But it's the goal for elementary in the literacy plan, and we're also working with the District Management Council. And they know what we would like to see in schedules, and they're working really hard to make that happen. But I think it'll be gradual. You know, we have, there has to be some give and take, right? But that's our ultimate goal, because we know that's what students truly need, but we also have other constraints that we have to work around.
Is that the focus of what the TLA will be helping with, or is...
Not necessarily.
TLA is very highly focused on the actual instruction that the teacher is implementing in the class to individuals, small groups, and the large class. The District Management Council is a consulting group that we're working with around scheduling and looking at options, and where can we move this to make 120 minutes, or in two years, we can get to 120 minutes. So they're going to take a look at all of our schedules and have been, and have had some interviews with us, and then they're going to give us some options and say, "Have you ever thought about doing it this way?" or something like that.
But TLA can certainly support us with that. I mean, they are full of ideas and creative ways to sort of make things work, so they'll certainly help us with that.
And my last one, and if you don't mind, Mr. Lai, at some point, I might write down some of the more questions that I had out of this and that we could...
Absolutely.
Okay, so, because the only other thing I had was, I don't, I didn't, and I may have missed it, I know we were talking about individualized instruction, and we're talking about closing the gap, but I didn't see anything on the students at the higher level who, how are we helping those students? Because they have huge potential unlimited. And I don't see them included in here specifically.
Just making a note, so I can go back and review too. But in terms of elementary, and we're still working with secondary to sort of flush out what this vision is going to look like, but with elementary, the workshop model that we're moving towards allows teachers to meet every child where they're at. So regardless of whether they're below level, on level, above level, and instruction will be tailored to those students. I mean, there will be whole-class instruction, right, that everybody is getting, but a good portion of the workshop block is doing either small-group lessons, and you could do that with, by level, or by strategy. So if a bunch of students needed a particular strategy, the teacher would pull those students and teach that. and teach that. And also, there's a lot of time for what we call conferring, which is when you sit down with just one student, it's a five-minute conference, and you're really targeting the exact needs of that child, right? So, if it's an advanced student, they will be getting the strategies that they need where they're at.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
This is an unbelievable report.
Well, good.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the school committee? Seeing none, anybody here in the audience that had a specific question relating to the district literacy plan? No? Okay. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate the presentation. All right, our next item of business, we're going to hear a presentation from our CPAC board numbers. They're going to give us an overview of their work over the current year. And I believe we have Mary Ann Donovan, and we have Joe Newhouse with us. And, anybody else?
Christine.
Christine Nelly, she's hiding. She's here for moral support. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for inviting us and letting us come and present to all of you. I'm Joe Newhouse, and this is Mary Ann Donovan. We were the coaches this past year, and we will get right into it. This is our new logo that one of our members did up for us this year, that added a lot of color and came out great.
Oh, is it on the side? Does it say off? There you go.
And I know, we talk about this almost every year, but I think it's important, you know, what is a CPAC? And this is driven by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71B. And under the Mass law, it requires that all school districts have a CPAC, and this is checked during districts' coordinated reviews, which is every six years, and then there's also a mid-cycle review, special ed follow-up. And I know we'll be starting, Wilmington will be starting their coordinated review next year for the year after, because I know we've been asked to do a survey to get that started for next year. And one of the important pieces that the Mass law talks about is that the CPACs are important to advise the school committee on matters that pertain to special education and safety of students with disabilities. And the advising responsibilities are seeking out views of those affected by special education, advise on how to meet those needs, make recommendations on policies, and serve as a resource to the district. And one thing that I think I've been finding is I think we're an underutilized resource a lot of the time, especially by parents and teachers, and, you know, we hope that we can change that and become a bigger resource. We are a small group and we're, but we like to think, we do have a lot of information and, like, we become that resource for the district.
Our next one. All right, on our next slide, this is our mission statement. What is the Wilmington CPAC? The Wilmington Special Education Parent Advisory Council provides education and support to parents, school personnel, and the broader community on special education issues and services. We support all families on IEPs and 504s. We're a subcommittee of the school committee. We currently have members serving on the district advisory committee. We are members of the Mass PAC, which the district has been supportive of us since our revitalization eight years ago, give or take. Next piece would be, school committees can only have one CPAC, and a lot of communities struggle with this. Part of the regulation that Mrs. Newhouse spoke about requires that we do bylaws, that CPACs actually have bylaws so that districts can only, they can support one. So, it's clear across the board which CPAC a district, a district has.
And the next slide, it's more for parents and caregivers who are hopefully listening and watching, but we've been, we get questioned a lot about, you know, what is special education, and my child not under special education? But really, so we thought it was important to break down what was special education, and it's really classroom or private instruction involving techniques, exercises, and subject matters designed for students whose learning needs cannot be met by the standard school curriculum. And this doesn't always mean that your child is physically or intellectually challenged. You know, gifted children can fall under this umbrella as well. And the CPAC is here to provide guidance to all families who are on IEPs, 504s, and even families who, whose children struggle and have not yet been identified, and, you know, you have questions, you're not sure where to go, and we're a great resource to, you know, give you direction on where to go and how to handle it within the school district.
And on this slide, this is who we are. This is our CPAC Board of Directors, Lisa Costanello, she is a member at large. Kate O'Malley is a, currently a member at large, who will next year be your co-chair. Christine Nelly is the secretary. Melissa McDonald is the technology liaison and secretary. Joe Newhouse is co-chair, myself, Mary Ann Donovan. Some of the roles that our Board of Directors have done, we take a big role in continuing parent education, reeducating ourselves on all issues of special education. We've had members attend the State House Dyslexia Day. Many members attend Federation for Children with Special Needs, their conference year after year. Parents on this board, you need to take a different approach. You have to learn how to advocate for the district need as a whole versus what you might be thinking your specific child might need. And it's a shift in thinking and a real accomplishment for this board to take that on, and they've done some great work over the past few years.
This year, we were able to do five different workshops for the district.
We had Basic Rights. Beth Bostick is a trainer from the Federation for Children with Special Needs, came and did a, they're about two-hour workshops, including questions on this topic. Basic Rights, a district it needs to do every year. This is the nuts and bolts of special education. What a district required to do, what's a parent required to do, how does it start? When does it stop? What's the process for it stopping? Most concerns that come up about this process go right back to Basic Rights.
And then, we were lucky enough to have Kate Burnham, Mrs. Appolito, and Mrs. Cornell come in and do a workshop on foundations and envisioned math, and how it affects kids on IEPs. And they really gave us some great examples on the universal design for learning and response to intervention, and how this, these new programs were great tools for the children who are struggling, and how the teachers could use these programs and work with, you know, kids at all different levels, and they could, it was a great workshop. And I know we all got a lot out of it, and have even talked about bringing them back for smaller group meetings, so they could dive into it more with us.
And then, we also had the executive function workshop by Beyond Booksmart. Executive function is really what we call the walk, talk, and chew gum section of your brain, and it applies to all areas of learning. And it's amazing how the presenter broke down for people in the audience just what might be an executive function issue, and how it affects you in the classroom. In the grocery store, that was her big model, oh, I'm not a fan of the grocery store, and how some things, reading, literacy, math, it affects everything and everybody. And then, lastly, we had...
Next, we had Julie Kelly and Neil Ellis came in and did a workshop on Google Tools for Education, and showed us the different ways that the Google apps could be changed and modified per kid within a district under each of their own profiles, and that, once they were modified, which I thought was great, every time this child signs into their Wilmington account, those modifications stay. So, if they're dyslexic and they need certain fonts, every time they log in, that font's going to stay with them. And this, again, was another great example of the UDL model and...
Huge.
And how it can affect all, not only kids on IEPs and 504s, but I would think, you know, across the board, all the general education. And this was a fantastic, well-attended workshop, and one that we've already got requests to bring in again for next year as the Chromebooks get rolled out, and so, it'll be one that we'll be looking to bring back again.
And then, the last one we did, the Bureau of Special Education Appeals is now offering a workshop on who they are and what they do. So, of course, we signed up for it, because that's what we like to do, we like to do workshops. So, we had the two mediators come in and talk about mediation. Now, the really strange thing about mediation is, it's unique to each district. Each district is unique, so the way they mediate is unique. It's not universal across the board. You don't have to, it's, it has to be agreeable to both parties. It's not something that's mandatory. It's out there, it's offered, but both parties have to agree to it. Your IEP does not have, you don't have to reject your IEP to look to a mediator. You might have one small piece that you're working on, and they provide technical assistance to, they could provide it really to anybody. So, we were fortunate enough to have two mediators come in and really kind of talk about the various processes for mediation. And we were able, you know, a good number of parents attended, and everyone kind of walked away saying, oh, I didn't know that part about this particular process. So, that was, that was really, really a nice new workshop that the state has come up with for us.
So, that was how we did our workshops, but another, last year, we brought back parent and caregiver support groups for the district. This was a need that was talked about for a few years, and halfway through last school year, we brought it back. They were not well-attended this year, but I'm not giving up on them, because I keep hearing more and more, you know, do we have a support group? When are they? I think we're just, we need to find the right schedule and how to get people out and not so shy on, because I think sometimes they don't want to meet at, say, Panera's backroom because they don't want everyone at Panera knowing they're attending, you know, a support group for some reason, not that we advertise there, you know, that it's a support group, but we hear a lot of that type of conversation, although I know I hear from teachers that, oh, we wish we had, we could send this family somewhere for some, so a little bit of support, or, you know, many parents asking for it. So, we held six group meetings this year, and I'm hoping we'll do that, maybe a little, a few more next year, and we can get it, so it's not, so it's well-attended. And then, membership and recruitment, we're six members right now, and we've been, and we've been at that for quite a while. And so, we've been talking that in the fall, we're really looking to get out there and talk with parents and bring more parents in, and how can they help? And we understand that a lot of parents can't necessarily make all board meetings. You don't need to make all board meetings. If you can work on a project, if you can, if you have any ideas, ways to get parents more involved, and give us more voices than just the six of us, because special ed is so much bigger than just six voices. And, you know, we are willing to talk and spread the word for everybody, but we need to hear from more people and getting more people to come and talk to us and come to our meetings. So, we'll be having an open house in the fall. We haven't set the date yet, but that is on our agenda, and we'll be talking with the new Director of Student Services over the summer, setting up the agenda for next year. The other avenue that we would like to do is to talk to all building principals and put up a table at each building's open house. Our, one of our board members was nice enough to do the new logo. We have new signs. We have all these new flyers and business cards that we can hand out, and, you know, get it so it's not just six of us talking for such a huge community.
And lastly, just some news in the special education front. There were two Dear Colleague letters issued this year on specific learning disabilities, dysgraphia, dyscalculia, dyslexia. Teams in many states and many communities struggled with using these terms. Can they use them? Should they use them? It was a, it was a big enough struggle that, you know, the Secretary of Education came, they did come out with some Dear Colleague letters, clearing, clearing things up, so that these terms, when appropriate, can and should be used in relation to students who have a di, this type of diagnosis. So, that was, that was just some news that we had. We also have had a specific bill in our state regarding dyslexia that has kind of just come out of, it's just gotten assigned a specific number, the Dyslexia Bill, that they're looking to address very young children. So, that's what's in the news.
And I did include it in your packet, hopefully you got the full Dear Colleague letters that you can look at. And then, looking towards next year, we have a lot of grand ideas, and one thing that we're going to start working on over this summer is a resource guide for everyone. We'd like this resource guide to be for administrators, teachers, staff, parents, where, you know, you don't know where to send somebody for a specific learning disability or a specific disability, or any kind of resource that it affects our students. So, we're looking to pull something together so it's easy to find the information and where to go. And we will also be pulling together a survey for special education parents. We'll start a working committee on that this summer as well, and we will also be working with the new Director of Student Services on what she would like to see, so we can make sure that we answer all her... so we can make sure that we answer all her questions and get ready for the coordinated review by the state. And then, these are all the potential workshops that we're looking at. We obviously will not be able to hold all of them. But, but they're all the workshops that we're looking at and have been asked to hold by different people. And one thing is that we have donated a thousand dollars to help hold the Ross Green Parent Workshop in the fall. So we're looking forward to that. And, you know, with all these workshops, I did want to add, because we were here for the last school committee meeting and saw the Behavioral Health Task Force and all the work that they're doing. And one thing I'd love to add is we'd love to collaborate with them more on all their parent workshops that they're pulling together, because I don't want to see us working against them and planning all these different workshops. And find a way that we can collaborate and complement each other and not plan, hopefully not plan them. So we're bombarding parents in one month with three different workshops. But I think, I'd love to, I love seeing what the Behavioral Health Task Force is doing. And I think, you know, we can definitely collaborate together and pull some great workshops together for parents in the district next year.
And we have our thank yous to the Director of Special Education, Mary Hood, our liaison to the CPAC from the School Committee, Peggy Kane, our Superintendent, Ms. Delai, the Wilmington Public Schools Administration and staff for all of their hard work and collaborative efforts. We are so fortunate that, with the staff we have in our district, we are so fortunate. So thank you all. Hopefully, there's a question or two?
I'm gonna look to my right this time. Any questions down the center of the table, Mrs. Kane?
I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to add to the presentation that everything they're saying is absolutely so correct. And there may only be six of them, but when they have a meeting, they, they come in, they're pleasant to each other and, you know, catch up for about three minutes and then they're right to work. And they're really working session meetings. And they have so many ideas. And I love that idea of collaborating with the behavioral group. Because I was thinking of that, you're bringing in so many excellent workshops that could be used in other areas in the school system too. And I just think what they said in the beginning, it would be really helpful if more people got involved and trying to think of ways that can help them to get involved. But it's an excellent, excellent group and I really think they're wonderful. So I can't thank you enough for what you do for the school system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Bjork?
You'd kind of stressed at one point, at one point in your presentation that the School Committee recognizes only one CPAC. And I was, I was just curious, have there been, have there been any efforts to create a second? And if so, why would there?
Not, not in, not in our community, but we see this come up on MassPAC on the listserv a lot. You know, you may have, in order, it's funny, a district is required to have a CPAC, but you need parent volunteers to run it. So maybe there, there's one, one or two members, and then there's another group that wants to revitalize the CPAC and a group's not aware that, oh, guess what, we already have one. Those kind of questions come up on, on the listserv a lot.
And I think we're very fortunate because we have had such a great collaborative effort. And we've been able to work great with the school district. Whereas you'd be surprised, many of the CPACs in the state of Massachusetts do not have those collaborative efforts. And it's really more your angry parents fighting against the school district to get certain things done. And that's really where you need to learn to put away your own thoughts and issues you may have with, say, your individual children. As I'm sure, same, I'm sure with this, you in, on the school committee, you gotta put those personal thoughts aside and do what's right for the district and help out where you can.
Any, anything else from the School Committee? Is there anyone in the audience that has a question or a comment for our CPAC members? Thank you very much for coming, we appreciate the information. Great, next up, we're gonna hear from our K through five CARES Coordinator, Jean Noonan. Will be giving us some information on the work of the CARES program.
Mrs. Noonan is a security risk.
If we need to postpone it?
Mrs. Kane?
Well, waiting here, I just wanted to say that Jean's left over from when I was the chair because in the past, we've had Jean come in. And I was trying to think of what I want to make sure was done for this year. And so I had asked, and she's so gracious to come because it's very hard for public speaking. But the CARES program has developed unbelievably through her tutelage. And it's really, this is more of a, for me, a show and tell because you're doing such a fabulous job with that program.
Thank you, Mrs. Kane.
And I think the parents would all agree.
I think the, my kids haven't been in CARES for several years, but I have to say, the caliber of individuals who are part of that program for our kids and students, they go above and beyond, you know, for their students. And I have to say that, I'll never forget all that your staff had done for my children, so I thank you.
Thank you very much, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, well, it was Mrs. Kane who invited me here. So I was asked to come here to give a brief overview, and I know everyone's had a long night. The play in me would ask you all to stand up and wiggle your hands and all that, but I won't make you do that, to get some blood flowing. So I will try and be as brief as possible. It is a large program, it does encompass a lot, but I really tried to take a snapshot. So I'm here tonight to give you some of those highlights. And I don't know how to use this.
Down arrow.
Down. Maybe down?
Is it off, it's on the side, it's an off and on slide, yeah, there you go.
There we go, okay, thank you. So the crux of the CARES program, which many of you probably already know about, is our before and after-school programs. As school-age care professionals, as it says up here, our primary goal is to provide a safe environment where our kids can grow. I've outlined up here a typical daily schedule, and as you can see, I wrote "typical" in quotes because it never is exactly that. Those are the components of our program, those are the basic components. They change from day to day, they change from week to week. We may have planned activities that the drivers of those activities, who are our children, have decided it's either going to be longer, or it's gonna be nixed, or they've changed it in some way. So it is a typical program, but not exactly what we're doing at any given time. The name of the game for us at CARES is choice. We really want the kids to be able to have a lot of choices and do a lot of different things. And as many people have said already today, is meet the children where they are, find out what they're interested in. So to give you a few of the numbers, as Mrs. Kane has said, you know, we've been here together for quite a few years. I started in 2000. So it's been about 16 years. And I wanted to give you sort of an idea of how we're growing in the before and after-school programs from 2000 to 2010, which was just five years ago, and even since then. Even in the last five years, we've grown another eight to nine percent or so, just in our before and after-school programs. Additionally, we have our summer programs. This summer, we have 223 children enrolled and an average daily attendance of 119 children. Again, that's up from last year. So something a little different that I wanted to do tonight was to talk about play. The foundation of the CARES program is that it's a play-based recreational program. That's the foundation. Oftentimes, when we hear people talk about play, we hear that word "just" with it. The kids are just playing, or they've just played. I don't know why, but somehow that strikes me as a negative. So I was hoping tonight, and I hear it often, so I was hoping tonight to maybe challenge some of the thinking on that, either with some of the folks here, or maybe validate some of your own thinking, maybe it's similar to mine, I don't know. Or even some of the folks who are watching. So think about what you think of when you hear kids are just, just playing, okay? So I wanted to spark your curiosity. And in order to do that, I wanted to do three things tonight. Talk about what is play, sounds like a silly question, but it's not. Why is it so important? And then what are some of the ways that we celebrate and incorporate and practice play at CARES? So what is free play? And I found some really great, great quotes. One of them is by Dr. Peter Gray, who's a psychologist and research professor at B.C. He says, "Play is self-chosen and self-directed. Players are always free to quit." I do have, actually, this is my summer reading, which is his book, I don't know if anyone's familiar with it. I brought a copy for you. But his, the title of the book is Free to Learn, and his subtitle is Why Unleashing the Instinct to Play Will Make Our Children Happier, More Self-Reliant, and Better Students for Life. So I'd love to share this with all of you. You can make it your summer reading, but you have to pass it around. I have one for me too. Fred Rogers, how can you talk about play without talking about Fred Rogers, tells us that play is often talked about as if it were a relief from serious learning. But for children, play is serious learning, it really is. It's really the work that the kids are doing in their childhood. I added another one from Steve Groves and Rebecca Sanderson, from their article, Play is the Way. Historically, play has been viewed as a frivolous break from important endeavors like working and learning, when in fact, a child's ability to fully and freely engage in play is essential to their learning productivity and overall development. These are some of our Beltwell kids at play, with their Legos. I wish I had audio with it. So what are some of the benefits of free play? Why is it so important? There are so many benefits of free play, but some of them, according to the Youth Highland in the UK, are listed here under these four categories. There are the physical benefits, the social skills, cognitive and intellectual development, as well as emotional health and well-being. And that emotional health and well-being piece is obviously huge to us in this district, and it's really big in CARES. There is so much involved when these kids are playing with each other, they're learning from each other, they're learning how to make friends. We're, we're so focused sometimes on techno, technology, which is a wonderful thing, but they're forgetting how to learn to just ask their buddy to play and things like that. And in doing some of my research, and I've actually been researching play for a number of years for myself, in an effort to help educate other people why it's so important and what it is that's happening when kids are playing. If you talk to any of my staff, they'll, they'll tell you that I'm always talking about secret learning that's going on while they're playing. But what I wanted to mention is that with what I've learned, what I'm learning is that the importance of play is universal. This article here, the last one came from the UK. This one's from our own Department of Early Education and Care. And if you read through it, which I'm not gonna read the whole thing to you, but you'll see they focus on the same things, the physical benefits, the social skills, the cognitive, and the emotional health and well-being. So I don't know, I'm not gonna play this for you, but I don't know if any of you are familiar with any of the studies of play. But what I've learned myself is that there are so many people who have actually made this their life's work. And in my research, I found a couple of TED Talks that I thought were particularly enlightening. This is one of them. I would highly encourage you afterwards, if I've intrigued you at all, to find out a little more about it, to go and listen to one of these, one or two of these. This is Stuart Brown, he's a play researcher and psychiatrist. And he actually has made this his life's work and focuses his research on animals and humans and connects play, from his research, directly connects this play to all these aspects and traits that we've been talking about earlier. The, the physical well-being, emotional and social well-being, intellectual, okay? And the next one is Dr. Peter Gray. He is the author of this book, and again, I let you know, he's from the Boston area. He is very passionate about play and actually got into this field because of his son. If you watch this film, I want you to keep in the back of your mind that he does take a bit of an extreme view of play. And he's talking about less school, more play. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, let's find a balance. Let's find a balance, where is that? So I would highly recommend you watching that. So we talked about what, what I think play is and why I think it's important. So how does that reflect in the CARES program? I obviously can't show you everything about the CARES program. But our Reuben Street Site Coordinator, Taryn Anastas, was kind enough to put a few slides together for me. I asked her for, give me a couple of highlights of your program. And that was the only instruction I gave her. And this is what she did, and I was so impressed. So this is one of the activities that, that the kids did right at the very start of this year. And it's called the Kindness Jar that they put together. And the idea was, if someone caught someone else being kind, whether it was one of the children or one of the staff, without being asked, that was the key, they were to write it down and put it in this jar. And then every day at snack time, they picked one of those to read. Well, it just took off like a shot. And it, the empathy that you saw, you know, kids were falling down, now their buddy's helping them, not jumping over them to the next thing. So it, it was just wonderful, it really grew. It made the kids feel proud of themselves and what they were doing. So that's one activity. This was, this was at Halloween time, obviously. They had an absolute blast. We invited parents to this activity as well. I don't see any in these pictures, I see some staff. But what was exciting about this was they were able to choose which activities they wanted to do. They rotated around the activities, they helped decide the activities. So it was really a wonderful thing. And I've gotta say, these are some of our Reuben Street staff. And I was thrilled that she put this in there, because I have to say, and Mrs. Burns was talking about, you know, the staff in this program, the staff really make it what it is. They're the people who are enveloping these kids with kindness, love, caring, new activities, exciting times, and just in the air sometimes. So I had, and look how happy they were. They don't typically wear that dress code. This was an activity that they did during Thanksgiving time. They had asked the children to write down what they were thankful for at any given time or at that time. And the goal of it was to really discuss with all the kids that no matter what's going on in your life, there is something to be thankful for. So they did talk about things that were kind of stinky right now, and so does that mean you have nothing to be thankful for? No, so it helped, helped adjust their thinking a little bit. They acknowledged that there might have been a problem, but also that there are good things going on. And that was their Thankfulness Tree. Love this. There wasn't a lot of snow this year, but a huge part of our program is outdoor play. And you could see a lot of... And you could see a lot of very happy children and staff right there. And it, this is, this is the kind of play I really love, that gives them the openness to go out and do what they want. Somebody said, "Let's make a snowman." Somebody said, "Let's use these for buttons." Somebody else said, "Let's use these for arms." They're having fun. They're building that teamwork. They're making decisions. It's really wonderful. This was another project. When we do community service at CARES, we have two goals. One is to make it so it's not a cost for the parents. And the second goal is to make it something that the children really are doing, not the parents doing. So if we're donating things, we're looking for something the kids can do. This came out of one of our former staff members, who actually got her dog from the Great Dog Rescue in Woburn. She was talking about it to the kids, and some of the kids said, "Well, can we go there? You know, can we help them? What can we do?" So she said, she called the place, and they said, "We're always looking for paper to line the cages. Always looking for more paper. Could the kids collect paper?" So they did. They started it, then they made it into a competition with each other by grade. They ended up collecting sixteen, over sixteen feet of newspaper that they delivered to the dog rescue, and they were so proud of themselves. And they made the paper, which really got them excited.
And donated that paper, too.
What's that?
And donated that paper, too.
They did not. They did not. Okay, this is, I guess this is one of my favorites, too, I got to say. This was an early release day. And the kids decided that they wanted to have a talent contest. You would never have caught me up on stage then. You barely are catching me now, in front of people. But what a wonderful thing for them to do. They decided what their talents were. Again, I wish I had video or sound on this. Comedy shows, magic shows, singing, whatever they wanted, they were doing it, and performing it for all their buddies. So proud of themselves. This really, truly is my favorite. This activity, this just happened pretty recently. The kids went outside. Finally, you can get out, not cold anymore. They decided they're going to build their own communities. Well, you had to be standing over these groups of children while they were doing it. They truly were working collaboratively. They were deciding, oh, the police station goes here, the fire station has to be in the middle, this is the school owner, we need more houses. And their imaginations just flowed, just absolutely flowed. So this is them doing that. I don't know if you ever saw the ferry houses that they do? That's what it reminded me of. Only there was no direction. It was all them. It was all them. Okay. I don't know how I did that. So in addition to the before and after school programs, I talked about the summer a little bit, we also have our February and April vacation programs. This year, we did some new programs that aren't necessarily play in the way that I was talking about, but all have a play component to them, and all have a growth component and something that I think the system needs and our children need. One is the Box Program, which this wasn't the first year. I think this was the second year of Box. That's Build Our Kids Success. It's a before-school physical activity program, and we did it at the Woburn Street and the Shawshin. And it's actually sponsored by Reebok. They have the curriculum for it. At the middle school this year, we introduced two new programs. We're actually working on our middle school right now. As you could see from the numbers earlier, it's not growing in the format as the rest of the CARES is. So we're learning that they don't need that, but we think they need something. So we're trying different things to try and hit on that. Ultimately, we'd like to see a catalog of activities that are interest-based, that they can do. So two of them that really hit well this year were Code to the Future and Kids Test Kitchen. Kids Test Kitchen was the biggest hit of the two. And what I liked about it was, the person who was running it brought in the ingredients. They made them with the kids, and then they were able to bring the main ingredient home with the recipe to make for their families. Code to the Future is a computer program using Scratch from MIT. It's a coding program, and we had interest in that as well, not as much as Kids Test Kitchen, but we think if we try that again, it will do well. The Anti-Bullying Club was not new this year. We've done that a couple of years in a row. That's with Shawshin Tech, with Angela Kyra, who's a guidance counselor over there. She brings a group of her students over to do some activities with our kids along the lines of anti-bullying, and then they spend some time playing together, which is really wonderful. The kids really look forward to that on both ends, the tech kids and the CARES kids. And then this was new this year, also brought to us by Angela Kyra, Positive Emotional Health Program, that we've done at the North and West, same group of kids. And the concept is to give our children the tools to deal with feelings where they're not feeling good about themselves, or they're not feeling good about something in their life. So I've actually sat in on a few of those, and they've done some thought boxes, they've done some really good work there, and we hope to do that program again. And then coming up this summer with Tracy Jansen, we're going to do some Inventors Workshops that are going to be part of the CARES, but then we're also going to offer it to non-CARES children, some outside children. So those are some of the things that are going on. I talked to you about Kids Test Kitchen and Code to the Future. I did want to mention this. I did ask my middle school site coordinator, Caitlin Holmes, what do you do for play most of the time at CARES? Because it's a very small group, and we're really focused on homework. They all want to do their homework. But she said, "You'd be surprised." So I went over and checked it out, and they actually are doing quite a bit of play over there. Some of it is in their, they do a weekly challenge that they make up, but they also are putting on their own plays. There may just be six of them in an afternoon. There may be eight of them, but they're having casting auditions, and they're choosing the plays that they're doing, and they're really having a great time. So now that I've told you a little bit about play at CARES, I'm jumping back to this slide, or this is similar to what we've talked about before. And just when you're back and you're reading this, because I know you all are going to read it again tonight, take a look at some of those categories and how play develops for kids, and see if you can put any of the activities that I showed you into any of those categories. I bet you'll find them all there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any questions or comments down the send? No, just happy smiles. Good. Mrs. Kane?
I just have to say, I am so glad you came, and you have developed, this program has developed far beyond anything you would have thought of 10 or 15 years ago. It's incredible what you're doing with the kids. It's just great.
It really, it's, I'm not a one-man show. Patty Bozier is, has been a phenomenal support to me, and Paulis Amatus before her, as you know. And we have some incredible site coordinators at our schools, and their staff is just fabulous.
That's wonderful. Thank them all for us, please.
I will.
Yeah.
Any comments, questions?
I would echo that.
Great.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate the information.
I'm going to leave this for you. Truly, this is for you guys.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Maybe that should be our book.
We'll do a lottery.
Great, thank you. The next item of business is our personnel report. Superintendent Delai, are you going to pass it off to Mr. Rogiro?
I am going to pass it off to Mr. Rogiro.
Thank you. In front of you have a personnel report. I think our last one was in December, so this takes us from January to current, or this current fiscal year, so this gives you an idea.
Any questions, comments? Not down the send? How about down the send? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rogiro. All right. Our next item of business, I can't believe it's been a year already, but is our superintendent evaluation. And I will share with the audience, this is directly related to the educator evaluation process as a whole in the state of Massachusetts. We, as individual school committee members, each completed our forms, and then a subcommittee compiled them into one final document, and I'm going to be sharing the highlights of the final document this evening. But it's a pretty substantial form. This is the form that we get from the state, so it's not as if our district is making something up. This is the same format we used last year. And last year, and this year, we use the same procedure and methodology for the presentation itself. One of the things that we look at are standards of performance, and the state of Massachusetts suggests four standards that we take a look at. Standard one has to do with instructional leadership, and I'm just going to read the brief definition. "The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling." And there's four ratings that we take a look at. Unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and exemplary. And I am very pleased to report that Superintendent Delai achieved a rating of proficient for standard one, instructional leadership. Standard two has to do with management and operations of our district as a whole. And again, I'll share the definition of standard two. "The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staffing, and scheduling." Again, the same four possibilities for ratings, and again, we have a proficient for Superintendent Delai. Standard three is family and communicate, community engagement. This is something that we've talked a lot about recently. And the definition for the standard family and community engagement is as follows. "The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the district and its schools." And again, we have a rating of proficient. And standard four, the professional culture. "The educational leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by nurturing and sustaining a district-wide culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for all staff." And I think we've seen many examples of that over the course of the year. Based on those four standards, then we have to rate an overall summative performance, and that being, there's four choices, again, the same four choices, and we gave Superintendent Delai a rating of proficient. But I do want to share the comments, and the way we compiled the comments is we took our individual comments, so if you hear some of your own words, there's a reason for it. And I think this is the biggest piece. George Bernard Shaw said, "Progress is impossible without change." "The community of Wilmington shows a strong desire for our schools to continue to progress into the future, but the change that comes with progression can be difficult to accept. This has been the year of perceived change." Last year, Superintendent Delai's entry plan, receiving many accolades, identified areas in our district that were in need of change and progression. Her entry plan led to the development of a revised strategic plan, the Strategy for Improvement of Student Outcomes 2015-2018. This school year saw the implementation of this revised strategic plan, laying the groundwork for the work ahead. And we've seen, again, many examples of that over the course of this year. While the findings of our evaluation result in a rating of proficient, we want to stress that we continue to be extremely impressed with Superintendent Delai's job performance, especially in light of the fact that she spent a significant amount of time without a full complement of her leadership team. Her commitment to strong fiscal responsibility, development and strengthening of leadership and advisory teams, and bringing in supportive behavioral health programming, for example, the CPS program, are just some examples of many of her work towards meeting the vision and mission of our district and supporting the achievement of all students. We are especially impressed with the amount of work she has done towards building programming and supports in her goal of closing the gap. Although there is still much work to be done in this area, what she has achieved thus far is very commendable. We look forward to seeing the results of her hard work soon. Being active in her own personal and professional growth by taking part in the superintendent induction program, educational and leadership conferences, and workshops has only enhanced her strong professional skills and abilities. There is no question that Mary works tirelessly on behalf of the children of Wilmington." Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anything to add from the school committee? No? Smiles? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all that feedback, I truly do. So it's certainly been a, it's been an extraordinary year and a challenging year, and somebody recently said to me that all the, all the challenges that you faced over the course of this year make you, will make you a stronger and more compassionate leader, and I believe that to be the case. So I do appreciate your support and the feedback that you provide.
Okay, great. Thank you. And our evaluation does require that we make a motion and a vote to accept the evaluation. So at this point, I will ask for a motion to vote on the superintendent evaluation. Mr. Bjork?
I don't think such a motion.
Is there a second? Oh, Mrs. Kane, I think I saw your hand first. All those in favor? We've got a unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. Public comment. As we've gone on through the evening, our numbers have dwindled a little bit. That's okay. Any public comment? No? Other reports, and as I promised, I'm going to start down at this end. Mr. Talbot, anything to share?
Nope.
Mrs. Burns?
No.
Mr. Bjork?
I would just say that graduation, once again, was just a fantastic feat of organization, and it was just fantastic watching the students receive their diplomas and throw the mortarboards up in the air.
Yeah, it's fun. I have to say, besides graduation, my favorite event of the year is the Scholarship Awards Night for our seniors. It's just a super happy occasion. You really get a sense of how generous our community is as a whole. I think I heard $152,000. That's huge. And I think we had almost 100 kids partake in that, which is amazing to me. So I, that's one of my favorite events. Mrs. Blanish?
Nothing.
Mrs. Kane?
Nothing. It's a good night.
Okay. Mr. Moulis? No, we're good. Okay. Any correspondence? No? Okay. Future meeting dates. We have one more meeting of this school year, two weeks from today, June 22nd. And, anything else? Okay. I think at this point, we have a little business that we are going to need to finish, so I'm going to ask for a motion to return to executive session, from which we will not return. Can I get a motion to Mrs. Burns? And a second, Mr. Talbot?
Yeah.
Okay, and that needs to be a roll call. Mr. Bjork? Mrs. Blanish? Mrs. Broussard, yes. Mrs. Burns, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes. And yes. Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you all for attending, and have a good evening.